Yeah, Sarah's not able to be here, so we're just gonna dive right in. Have the presentation from Matrix consolidation and concise overview of the 100 and I don't remember, 70 pages?
220.
Yeah, it's over 200.
Yes.
You were close, you were close, you rounded down.
So, go ahead. Thanks for being here.
Thank you Rebecca. Mayor and Council, it's a pleasure to meet with you, and I met with many of you before. It's a pleasure to come back with you. Aaron Baggerly with the Matrix Consulting Group here to discuss the findings of the Development Review Study Final Report that we created. So, I might have to look back here to see the screen, but just wanna go over a quick methodology, some key findings, and some key recommendations. As we were joking before, this is a 220-page document with appendix. There are roughly 70. Some recommendations that we made related to the provision of development services here for the city of Oshkosh. And so, excited to provide a feedback with you, and this is really the wrap-up of the Development Review Study component of our contract, and we will be transitioning into the Fee Study Update component here this fall, and that will be Phase 2 of the study, and that'll be our financial services team in conjunction with our team that did some of this with that. So, just a quick reminder of the study methodology for you and the public here. We had multiple interim reviews as part of this study. We had a due diligence process where we met with all staff involved with this, met with many of you as part of the elected body here to get input and understanding the operations, practices, and processes and approaches here with the city of Oshkosh Development Review Process. In conjunction, we also did an online survey and some focus group and one-on-one conversations with past customers and some citizens of the community. My phone number and email got out there to a few people and had some really good conversations with people who maybe not as intimately involved in the development process, but got some feedback with them. We also compared the city's operations to industry and prevailing best practices to identify some strengths and improvement opportunities as well. We also had a pretty comprehensive operational, organizational, and staffing and code review as part of this assessment, and you'll see some of those recommendations that are more operationally based, organizational structure, management, and administration. And ultimately, we compiled this into that draft and final report that you have a copy of, and some of you have read in detail, and as somebody said, we will have an open book quiz at the end of this. Some of the key findings that we had as part of this, you do have very strong service levels. I think that is one of the key positives that you need to focus on. There's a very strong service level, performance turnaround, and you're meeting those goals that you have in place with that. Some of the stronger performance turnaround times that we have seen here recently that have not been mandated by the state. And so, that's something to keep in mind, and some other challenges we'll talk about with that later. Lots of institutional knowledge within long-term your staff about the city's processes and code. You have a very in-depth code handle, a lot of issue, or not a lot of issues there, but a very robust code, and so we did dive into that a little bit to identify some opportunities there. You've got the Evolve system as your primary permitting software system. It has some great functionalities, and some team members use it pretty well. Other team members don't use it at all, and that's creating some challenges with your permitting software platform system. Internal coordination, very similar to the use of technology, there's some limited coordination between the review disciplines, and that's creating some challenges and some pickups in your process. Centered operating procedures are hit or miss around some of the key components of the Development Review Process, and there's a need to formalize some SOP development and policies around this, and to also capture some of that institutional knowledge in case it was to walk out the door tomorrow with a big lottery win or something. And you have a very robust pre-application process, one of the most comprehensive pre-application process before you take a fee that we've actually seen, and we made some recommendations to temper that down a little bit and to modify that to be more diligent of staff's time and to provide a better overall process and experience for your customers out there. The next few slides really jump into some of the key recommendations. As you saw in the report, there were 70 some recommendations, and we broke these down in some different categories. Management and administration was the first chapter. We wanted to really set the stage with some changes organizationally in the management accountability area, and how that would influence your technology use, your staffing levels, your process improvements, your customer service outreach, et cetera. With that, some of the key management administration was to really overcome some of the challenges with the inconsistencies in the review functions, and to bring everybody together to buy into a single mission vision for the provision of Development Review. Community development is the primary department who, that's their primary focus, particularly in planning and zoning and the building side of things. They're focusing on that 99% of the time with subsequent code enforcement is a little bit different than the building inspection side of things, but engineering is a little bit of an outlier. A couple other departments have real small roles in that, and that's sometimes where some of the challenges pop up, and it's just because that's a secondary function for those other departments. So, aligning a mission and vision for all review discipline is gonna be critical for the successful implementation of many of these recommendations made as part of this study. There's opportunities to employ more data-driven management and monitor the process and performance and some of the challenges with that. If everybody uses the permitting software system, there's some performance reports that can come out of that to monitor that before your division has, your department has, even city leadership to get a temperature to be a little more preemptive if something was to arise or some challenges with performance down the line. As we mentioned before, need to develop standard operating procedures for greater consistency across staff, review disciplines, and different functional areas with that, and to create some more standardized approaches. That way, if staff turn over and leave, you got some consistency in that. And then, also as part of developing that mission and align some of the Development Review Functions together, there's a need to create an internal development leadership council, which is really a sounding board internally, staff, to work with city leadership, department leadership, to address some of the challenges, update some of the code issues, or even make technology changes across the line, to have a group that's really focusing on shepherding the study recommendation implementation, but also to address some other issues as they arise or to resolve challenges maybe come in that are often, you're a sounding board for, and you hear from the community at a large out there. The process improvement section was one of the more lengthier sections with the most recommendations that we had. And so, as we talked a little bit, a lack of all the review functions being actively engaged with the permitting software system. They need some workflows in there, they need some accountability of being included in using that system more regularly and as part of their process as well. You still have some paper processes, and we do make the recommendation to eventually transition to a mostly digital process, and I say mostly digital because there's always gonna be some of your homeowners, some subsets of the population that are more technology challenged, and I look at like my own mother, she had to get a permit recently where she lives, she's standing at the counter, and she has to call me to talk to the permit tech to get that. And so, sometimes you're just gonna have some of those, it's just easier to handle a fifth permit while they're standing there than sending them over here to do that. But the ultimate goal is to transition mostly to digital process, and I think really a lot of your applications already are coming through digital to the, it's not in the 90% tile, but you still have pretty high digital, for the building permitting side, some planning opportunities exist to digitize some of those workflows as well. There is a need towards the permit closeout on the inspection side and incorporate all review disciplines into the review, but also the inspection process as well, some of those secondary players, it's good to get them involved, particularly at the inspection process or even building permit review. Planning review process, you have pretty much everybody at the table, they have a put in, input at the site plan review process, and need to incorporate them throughout the process through final inspection certificate occupancy if applicable. Talking about the final inspection certificate occupancy process, there's some opportunities there to revamp that, to streamline that, to make it a little bit more efficient, incorporate everybody there to make sure things aren't missed before they can occupy that new structure. And probably one of the bigger process improvement recommendations that we made is to establish a building codes review board. Some of the public input that we receive, your prior customer, they experienced some challenges with the building permit review side of things and had some concerns with how staff were interpreting some of the codes, and by having a building codes review board, it gives you that appeal body if there are some challenges that they have, that customer procedure, even staff, where they can go to this professional body of appointed individuals to basically appeal a decision on a building permit. And establishing that gives you a relief valve to work with customers who maybe disagree with the building officials determination on something. So, additional process improvements that we have is, as I mentioned, you have a very robust pre-planning process, and so we made several recommendations around changing some of the pre-application thresholds, that what does require pre-application process, and to really tone it down a little bit, where right now you're providing a lot of free services out there on the planning pre-application process, and you're even taking some things to planning commission to get their initial take on application that's not necessarily a formal application yet. That's very odd in our experience of working across the country. And so, we made recommendations to change the pre-application process to only include staff review, to have it more focused on staff review input, not taking it to an appointed body for their initial first pass editor or their take on that. So, it's changing the level of service that you're providing, but it's also focusing staff efforts on formal applications that they know they're gonna review down the line, and modifying that pre-application process to change some of the thresholds where it's required and where it's optional with that. You wanna have that service in case somebody's got this idea of what they wanna do and ability to at least vet that out in a formal way, but doing that a little bit different. Another area on process improvement to help streamline the process is to conduct application completeness checks when it's submitted. This would have staff look at that, make sure the application is complete, you got all the documents you need, whether it's a planning or permitting application with that, and rejecting incomplete applications. One of the things that we've seen industry-wide across the country is the quality of applications have dramatically declined in quality over the last five or six years. And so, staff are getting applications that are incomplete, they don't have all the engineering submittals that they need, or the site plan, or architectural drawings that they need, and yes, it will be painful in the beginning to reject an application and say, hey, it's not complete, you need to have your team redo this and resubmit it, but at the end of the day, it makes staff life a lot easier, where they're looking at a complete application, they can do a true thorough check of it and able to sign off and provide meaningful feedback instead of, hey, your mission, missing your site plan, whereas that we can't review this and wasting their time with that. If somebody is checking that as it's coming in, rejecting it, then you get better applications at the end. And then, also standardizing some internal staff review timelines. There was some inconsistency on what staff thought internal review timelines were. Some people might say it's a 10-day turnaround time, but somebody else over here would say, oh, I've got 15 days to do it, and that's creating some challenges for the primary department, planning or building, to provide that because they're expecting it in 10 days, but they're getting it in 15, for an example, and that's creating challenges, so.
Aaron, sorry to interrupt you, but I'm stuck on the, like, you know, rejecting the applications that don't have their completeness. One of the things we continually hear is that we're hard to work with. Won't that exacerbate that problem, or will it mitigate it in the long run, is what you're telling me, but make it more painful in the short possibly?
Yeah, I think it would. A lot of the, when we have some conversations with people that you're difficult to work with, I think it's more on some of the personalities of staff, how they deal with people, some of the soft skills, maybe lack thereof, our interpretations of the code are more stringent requirements on where a building permit is maybe needed at times compared to other jurisdictions in the area. One thing that we often hear is it takes too long to get a permit from a city. We heard some of that here, but when we dove into that, it wasn't that a building permit, even commercial review is 15 business days, which is exceptional, as we talked about early on, and this as a shrink. It's the fact that they have to go four, five, six rounds of review before they get that permit, and whether or not that's, they submitted a poor quality application, the architect or engineer submitted garbage two or three rounds, and then really didn't get a complete application until that third round, that's where they get hung up because the total time from when they submitted initially until they get a permit is maybe six months. Well, three of those rounds were on them, or you turn it around in 15 days, six times, which was positive, but they took two months from the time it was returned back from the city until they resubmit it again. And so, it's really changing the expectation and some of that narrative, and holding them accountable to do that because they love to say to the homeowner business on all the cities, holding it up, when in fact, you've been sitting on it as the professional design person for two months.
And if I could, I think the use of technology and having more of the things on online permitting system will help. We might not accept the application until we have all those things, but then we'll also have the documentation of telling them, this is not complete, or this, we need this, and the dates and times when that happens. My experience that that's helped, helps a lot.
I had the same thoughts, and this is sort of a way that lots of towns and boroughs hear that there are a lack of guardrails, and we don't know what, nobody knows what's happening when. This is a great way to solve that problem because you'll know right away what's not happening and why, and then hopefully, to Rebecca's point, it gets addressed at that point rather than takes a long time.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification.
And I think having some of those dashboards are very important where it's easy to go in and get that data. When somebody complains, say, no, we returned it to you on April 18th, and it was not submitted back to the city until August 18th. That's four months. That's not the city's, that is your design professional. With that, and having some of that where that data's missing right now in that system, and so, when you get those complaints, it comes to Rebecca, it comes down to the department, it's hard to find some of that information because not every review function is incorporating that feedback into that system.
But I can just look and say, well, it looks like da-da-da-da-da, but let me double check with the staff.
And if you got the system set up right, if you've got some of those individuals you know are going to be more challenging or gonna complain a lot, staff can set up alerts in there to say, when something's dormant for 30, 60, 90 days, that it can come back and you can follow up with them, say, hey, you know, are you gonna draw this application? It's been 150 days since you did it, you know, building permit expires at 180 or whatever, make sure you get it back in before we have to restart this process so you don't, city doesn't look as bad. And then, I think finally, the last process improvement that we have here is modify the use of development agreements for routine activities. You have a lot of development agreements out there, and there's some opportunities to streamline the process to reduce some of those for some more routine activities. We give a couple examples in the report around where that can be reduced to take out some of that requirement for the applicant or waiting for the city's attorney office to develop some things that are routine with that, that's gonna be recorded as part of an easement or part of the land development title down the line. So, there's a couple areas there where some process efficiencies can be gained with modification or use of development agreements. The next area of the report we looked at was customer engagement and customer information. This is really how do you engage with the customer, but also what information are you providing out there through your city's website? I mean, most people are gonna look at a website now to see, what do I need to do? Do I need a permit? What requires this? What is the process for the city? Setting those expectations, doing their due diligence and their own homework out there, which is important because that reduces the call volume coming in to staff, asking some questions, what is my property zone? Can I do this? What's my setback for a storage shed, for example? And so, we make recommendations to allow a little bit more due diligence for those applicants, but also understanding they're not gonna read 14 pages on how to get a building permit. Their attention span for all of us is, you know, 30 seconds now. And so, we do make the recommendation to create a centralized development webpage to consolidate that and to make it easily findable from the city's homepage with that. There's free search out there, if you got click more than three pages, people give up and stop finding, or if you can't keyword search it, it is difficult. So, creating a centralized development webpage to be a landing page for anything related to planning, building, maybe in code enforcement as well with that, with no review of the processor. Also, develop application checklist and guidebook to have online, so there's more information as you're submitting an application. What do I need to have? If you clearly outline what you need for an application, it makes it much easier for staff to reject that at the end of the day and say, hey, you needed these 15 things, you hit three of them, you're out. Provide the other 12, and we can move forward with this review and get it to you back in the next five or 10 days, which is much better than what your neighboring communities are doing. Also, something we've seen great success with in other clients and certainly believe is providing an online meeting schedule with staff so that they can go in and, hey, I need to talk to a building inspector, commercial building inspector about something, but I don't necessarily wanna drive down to City Hall and have to be there from whatever time your doors are open. I can have virtual meeting with the building staff, schedule that, and staff, you know, don't have a walk-in, they can schedule their day or their day around these two meetings I have with customers and have a little bit of background of what they may be talking about. So, it's a higher level of customer service with that. I think a long-term goal that's important to consider is, it's gonna be hard within the building footprint here, consolidate into a single Development Review Counter, to have a one-stop shop counter with that. Second floor is kinda hard with the linear hallway and the stairwells you have here, but there might be some opportunities to consolidate some of that down the line as you remodel this building in the future, to look at that, to have more of some integration between teams. You've got a hallway, you've got teams behind in different suites, and that creates some, just separation, out of sight, out of mind type of mentality. There's movement, I saw movement our team did while we were here going across the hallway, but some better opportunities to integrate some different teams with that. And then, finally, the last chapter is related to some of the regulatory changes that we recommend, and I know that there's been some staff movement on this since we started this project back in April, but really evaluating your current zoning codes, some other regulatory documents and standards out there to identify whether there's issues, to streamline some areas, maybe modify the code to align with prevailing practices in the development world. There's a lot of new technology in development, and whether engineering standards or building codes are zoning codes, you've seen some infill development in downtown that has a much different feel than something that's going along 41 out there. So, looking at the code, identifying some changes to bring back to council, to update the code, to make things more efficient and effective for staff on their review. It's also adopt a biannual process for codes and standard updates to accommodate some of those changes, and so that you know that every six months or every quarter, you're gonna have something here at council that you need to look at on the regulatory changes to potentially adopt some of those changes. There's also some opportunity to evaluate and modify some of the building permit requirements, and you do have a pretty lengthy list of some of what requires a building permit here, more so than some of your peer communities that we looked at, and opportunity to modify some approaches to that and what actually maybe requires a building permit, to take a comprehensive look at that, to maybe focus on that, to be a little bit more customer-friendly in the way you do that. We'd love to see instant permits here or over-the-counter permits with, like, subject to inspection, but Wisconsin law really limits some of that, and that creates some challenges where everything does have to go through a review. Ideally, we'd love to see, you know, water heater replacement, HVAC swap outs, where permits issued automatically just subject to inspection with that. And then, also some opportunities to modify qualifications and training requirements for your planning commissioners, to make sure they're well-equipped for their job and role. That's often a lot you're asking for those planning commissioners, and I've served in that capacity, and I'm glad I had a planning background to understand what my role was there, and, but to well equip them and what their role is to make it a more consistent and predictable process. So, with that, I'm gonna open it up to discussion questions, any comments that you have for me?
Aaron, I can start, seeing as I called for this like 18 months ago, it was me who started this process, so I'm glad this is done. It was great meeting with you, but I think the report is wonderful. As I'm reading it, I wanna know what your take is on what the, I mean, I'm hopeful that we can implement every one of your recommendations. I think they're all attainable, I think they're laid out appropriately. The next step, as I see it, is that Development Leadership Council, is that correct? Is what we should be doing next?
I think that would be a very hot priority. That way, you've got your staff leadership all together, really defining what that mission and goal is, and to develop an internal strategy of how to implement many of the recommendations that are here. Some of these, they're a little more sequential in how you do that, and Leadership Council's one, if we have that, then it's easy to develop that group, just gonna look at the code and dive in and make changes there, or who's gonna lead some of the software changes that need to happen, or who's gonna focus on the website enhancements. Have that leadership team in place where they can get, start assigning duties to themselves for others who are more well-equipped for that, and to do that. So, yes, I think that's probably a good starting point.
Is that a place where you think council can be involved in some way, shape, or form? I mean, lots of this is driven from us because we get the feedback first, to Carl's point a minute ago. I mean, we are the ones who have people telling us things that we need to see changed and would like to have changed. I see that body as a mechanism to help that process, because currently, if I'm really honest, that process is really difficult. I can't, for me to say, some of the things we talked about, I mean, if somebody comes to me and says, I don't think there should be a building permit for a roof in the city because there's not anywhere else, they're right, but I have no purview or way to make that discussion happen. Is this body that thing?
I think that body would be one that you would wanna filter down through the city manager's office to bring that, because I think there should be a representative, maybe not a full-time representative, a city manager, deputy city manager on that, but you wanna work through your appointee as council to bring up some of these issues, and then I think that that leadership committee can report back through the city manager back up and do that, but also that leadership committee, you know, maybe they report out every quarterly or report twice, twice a year to city council as, hey, here's the Matrix Study, here's where we're on those recommendations, because one thing, we didn't put in here, but if you're really gonna implement these recommendations like we hope you do, you have some transparency out there on the website with, here's a Matrix Report, here's the 73 recommendations that they have, and do a red light, green light, yellow light, it's completed, checked off, it was completed in January 2026, these 15 are under implementation right now, and then here's some hypothetical timelines when we'd like to get to these next 15, that's gonna be, you know, end of year 2026, or we're gonna start on this in 2027 with that, to provide that feedback back out to the community so they can see what's happening, what changes are occurring, and set that expectation that, hey, yeah, we're gonna have these software updates in 2027, so they're not thinking it's gonna happen tomorrow.
Sure, I think that's great, and I would hope that everybody who has read this and will read this can look at the recommendations and see how that does provide a path from where we are right now, and there are some things that we don't like, and there are some things we do, and there are some things we do great, but this, I really do think provides that path going forward. And if there's a mechanism for, I mean, we've had different conversations about different pieces of this, like enforcement, like Evolve publicly facing, is it not, those types of discussions are happening, but this isn't to solve that. The work of this will make those things better as we go forward, correct?
Correct, I mean, you wanna, you, you know, a lot of your code violations are often a result of some other challenges that you have, but if you can get this tightened up, then it's one less thing, you're more efficient, you're more effective, you provide those solutions out there that you can be more proactive and preventive on some potential issues for future councils to have to have on their agendas.
Agreed, go ahead.
In five, 10, or 15 years.
Yep.
I did have a question regarding prioritization of the recommendations, but listening to you over answering Chris's question, I think you probably already answered it, but I'm gonna ask it anyways. You, or as part of the Matrix Review, you guys didn't necessarily put together a high-priority, medium-low priority or ranking of them, or even, I'm a fan of the low-hanging fruit, right? Get some early wins. You didn't necessarily do that as part of this wrap-up, that's gonna be more on internal staff to try to gauge what's the lowest hanging fruit and what's the highest.
It's a combination of both. We wanted to bring this to council to get your feedback and to hear what feedback that you had back to us. Our next step to finalize this is to look at a prioritization or ranking of that in conjunction with staff, because they have experience, they have other priorities that we may or may not know about, and so we wanna work through Sarah, Jerry, I'm drawing a blank on planning's teams, and even Rebecca to really look at what needs to happen and the timeline of that down the line to make sure that we have an implementation plan that really guides us, what should occur in the next six months, what should be 2027, 2028 now, or 26, and looking at that to give you that game plan, because there's no way you can implement all of this in the next six months, and if you had $2 billion at your disposal, you couldn't implement it all in the next year anyway.
Sure, I think it's easy for me to say, whatever we can do to make the process easier to work through on the customer side, but also what makes it more efficient within the walls of this building and the people who call this building home, those are two high priorities for me. A lot of these recommendations do that, they check a lot of those boxes. So, it also means that, you know, at some point, we've gotta put dollars in different spaces and support those efforts. Yeah, online permitting and online interaction with customers, that's not something we have, it's not something we do well, we're gonna have to put some resources at that, and that 'll be a very good discussion when the time is right for how do we support that, how do we move this forward and, you know, bring it up to 2025, 2026-type standards, so. Couldn't agree more, because like you said, Aaron, the second floor is unfortunately confusing for a lot of public, it's confusing for me when I'm trying to figure out who I wanna talk to. So, even better is making it so people don't have to go to floor two, you know, they can do everything digital or as much as possible.
Yeah, because if you got somebody that's not maybe working in Oshkosh but living here and wanna do something to their house, it might be difficult for them to come during the workday to talk to somebody about that, but if they can have an online meeting, because that's what, like me, I've got six of those every day. that's what, like me, if I've got six of those every day, I can jump in, have that conversation, understand, well, no, I don't need a building permit, or that's my step, I need to hire X, Y, and Z to do that. It can be more efficient for them, and it also gives them a positive experience first off, where they're not coming in here upset, angry, because oftentimes people walk in, they can't find what they want on the website, they've been told one thing by this department, another thing by this department, and so they're coming in, the temperatures are arisen. So unfortunately, staff have to deal with that face-to-face where if you provide more of that resources, it can keep, it can lower the temperature immediately.
And that's a point that I really appreciate, the way that I've been reviewing this document. This is something I was very excited to see, you know, echoing most of the people in the room, I really like all of these, but the way that I view this is what's attainable for staff to do first and what can we show the public again to other people's points that we're making progress on this? Because we can't do this all overnight, that's not even close, it's going to take us years to get this done. But, you know, what's important for me is to show the public, hey, we're working through this, this isn't some report that we had commissioned that we put on a shelf and now it's gapping dust. We don't want to do that, we want to make sure that we're, you know, actively moving towards these goals, balancing those priorities of what's attainable for staff, what do we want the public to, you know, to, what's the public want to see done first? How do we prioritize that between staff, feedback with the public, council as well? This leadership council, I think, would be a very good clearinghouse for that, so that we have a central point of people who are looking at feedback from developers, feedback from residents, feedback from council, and looking at what to prioritize first as we move forward. A question that I would have is in terms of the rollout process for some of the low-hanging fruit. Once council goes to budget with this, I would like to see something on our website very quickly saying, okay, here's, you know, item one that we've done, item two, item three. How quickly have prior municipalities that have worked that rolled that out?
It really depends on their team. There's been sometimes where we submitted a draft report. Now, this one, we submitted a draft report about a month ago and it's gotten to council here very quickly, which is a little bit of an anomaly. Unless the time, it's about a two- to three-month process to get on a future council agenda, but we knew this was the date, so we want to make sure staff had plenty of time with that. Where sometimes, you know, some of these recommendations would already have been implemented from the time the draft report was made, or we had talked about that in previous conversations with staff, well, in advance of a draft report, and they're working on that, so the time we're here, there's already five or six victories that have been achieved. But I think this could be on the website pretty quickly with that, and it really depends on how you want to phrase it and what information you want to put out there and what that communication plan is out to the public. I think that's important, how you message that and get the word out there to say, hey, we did this study, we're committed to making these improvements as an organization, doing that and showing some progress and reporting on it. I think that is, that website, maybe it's a social media post on that when you have some quick wins or updates, hey, we're changing this process and we're going to change how we're doing this. You know, this is going to be the September 1 start date on something, to report out on some of those key wins with that, but also keeping it forefront and coming back here. Well, I don't view city council meetings necessarily as a, as a community meeting or sharing because as we're sitting here right now, I think everybody I see is staff over here listening to this, which is disappointing as real cool as some of the development community was about the challenges to you and also during the input of this. But having that out there where somebody can't say, I didn't know about this, or I didn't know we're making these changes, is important to say, yep, it's been on our website, it's been a council meeting six times in the last two years.
Right, because this has a lot of moving parts to it. It has things from code enforcement to our development process, to departmental structure, there's a lot of different moving parts here, but, and a lot of people are interested in what the outcome of this will be, but as long as we can be consistent in showing, okay, this is what we're tackling first, this is how we're prioritizing things, I think we'll be in a good spot. So I like all of these, but I want to make sure that we're just prioritizing correctly and move forward and execute them well.
Yep, we can certainly provide that back.
Very good, thank you.
I think it's either on an individual level or collective, it's important to note, especially for City Hall, change is hard. So this is going to be, at times, a hard process to accept or to move forward, as well as that acknowledging, the system's not broken. We are still moving projects forward every single day, we're still getting developments moved on, we're still helping consumers, our customers, you know, residents of Oshkosh, do what they need to do every day. Our processes are always and should be always under review for improvement in that the way we do it now, the things we've been looking for, the things we've required, at one point it was important that we did that, and it was a good thing. It was a, at that time, that whatever was, you know, whatever was instituted, it was an improvement at that time, it just may not be relevant to now. It may not be the best way of doing it now and into the future, and that we just, we have to evolve and we've got to look at, you know, how best to do what we do and what we're required to do moving forward. So I think, because some of this can be hard to swallow, that this is going to be different on the consumer side, on the City Hall side, but moving forward and trying to evolve is a good thing for us, so.
Yeah, and I think you've got to continuously have this change management mindset, both as an elected board, to say, hey, we're going to have that, we want to embed that culture within the organization, have staff to have that mindset to do that, because you have people who've been here a long time, and change is hard, and even new people, change is hard as well. And so creating that culture, starting it here and understanding what council's role is in this process and hear complaints, but how to filter them down and how to share that and provide that back to your constituents is just as important as staff having a new process and implementing that in, because we all are responsible for change in this. And you hear a lot of it from your community members and how you react as, you know, as part of that too.
And we can do both, we can highlight what we do well.
Yep.
Already and what we need to improve and striving for continuous improvement is, I think, I don't want to speak for everybody here, but I'm sure everybody likes to have that in their own organizations and bringing that here. I think it's also just we need to know what we have the capacity to start with because this is a lot, this is going to be a lot, but it's important that we get this on.
Yeah, I mean, you've got 72 recommendations here, that's, that's, a lot of recommendations are negative because it's something you need to do better. These reports are not great at highlighting some of the strengths that you have, such as that robust turnaround time that you have. You have open counter hours, you know, 40 hours a week, or maybe longer than that because you have lunch hours in there. So you provide some of that service that many other communities around, even your size are bigger, they have limited counter hours where you can walk in and, you know, how does that influence the perception of the city or whatnot? Everything can be improved and it's a continuous process to make changes to improve the predictability and consistency of the process and for efficiencies.
Absolutely, of course, always.
I just wanted to mention that we wanted this here to you as recommendations, we were, our intention was to go back as staff and talk about this, but then come forward with, let you know what our action plan is. I know that there's been mention of all these things being good, and I think they are, but I don't think we're going to be able to do every single one of them. So I don't, you know, just want to level set people's expectations. I mean, we have other plans we have, we have a strategic plan, I just sent all the department heads the goals, some items that I owe you for my goals by September 1st that have 25 action items. So, but a lot of, a lot of what we're doing already will handle these things. So I just want to make sure that, you know, there's an understanding that we'll be bringing back, this is what we're doing, and then updating people, it would be part of what we have in the budget, we're going to be putting in for a new licensing, permitting, software, all of those kind of things. And to me, that helps with at least half of that, at least half of this, so.
Very true.
Just want to level set of people's expectations.
That's, and I'm with you, that's part of what else I like about the way this was presented. I mean, we are lacking some org chart stuff right now, I know that we're working on that, that's a big part of this also, because if we had that, that would solve a lot of this as well. Having a mechanism for anybody in the public to have any kind of impact on what we talk about and how we get there is massive, and that's what that Development Leadership Council can be if we want to be. So it takes a lot of boxes, whether we accomplish them all in order or check them all off in six months or two years or three years, it's all in an order, and this really helps to make it comprehensive and then people know what is possible. And that's part of what, part of what I struggle with currently as a council in the last 18 months is it's hard for people to know what can be done to improve the process. This can be done to improve the process, so that's great.
And I really appreciate staff going through this and looking at what to prioritize first because before doing any of this, we need to set the conditions for success, and creating that organizational framework is going to be a very key part of that. So if we can get that done first, if we can put those building blocks down instead of going for the fancy flashy stuff, that'll be very helpful for us going forward.
Anything else? Thank you, appreciate the efforts, appreciate it all the time, and then we'll look forward to hearing more of the progress as it comes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.